Okay, good evening and welcome to the Planning Board of the Village of Southampton, Monday, March 4th meeting. Please take a moment to silence your cellphones. And we are going to the public hearing first of Elka LLC.
Shall I proceed?
Good evening. My name is John Bennett. Bennett and Reed, attorneys for the applicant. And since the purpose of a public hearing before a planning board, unlike a zoning board of appeals, is primarily for a public opportunity to be heard, I will try to be as brief as possible. One thing, in terms of some housekeeping, we did submit both the affidavit of mailing and the affidavit of posting. The affidavit of mailing had copies of the certified mail receipts, which the building department told us was satisfactory, but I just wanted to make sure, for totally complete and clear record, that you have the originals of the 66 notices that were sent out. So, submit those as well. So, we've posted and mailed as required by law, and I did have noticed that there was also an appropriate publication in the Southampton Press, which is the paper of record. This is primarily an application for interior modification, for creation of a retail food store. The property is utilized with significant vacancies, I should say now, but as retail space. It is zoned for retail space. The proposed use is retail space. There is no change in the use category under the village code. No changes proposed. It is retail now. It is zoned retail. It will remain retail. There is no enlargement whatsoever of the building and space, not by one square foot. As a matter of fact, if anything, there are two, there's a walk-in refrigerator in the back, which is going to be removed, and this small later add-on, which just housed the old A&amp;P loading system, is going to be removed. When I say A&amp;P, this was a food market many, many years ago. Showing my age, but when I was a child, this was where the Atlantic and Pacific Tea Company's space was. So, interestingly enough, it is going to be revert to a food store. Again, no enlargement whatsoever of the building or space. Under 116-14J of the Southampton Village Code, no additional parking is required, because there is no enlargement and there's no change of use, and the use that is extant on the properties now is the same as the use that is proposed. On February 4th, the matter received a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECPRA, which is a finding that there will be no environmental impact. The Health Department Board of Review approved the matter, and that is in the file. We do have a copy for you, yet another copy of that. This is the January, the hearing date was December 13th. The decision dated January, let me make sure, January 16th, 2013, to allow the reconfiguration of the septic, or rather, the wastewater. Actually, what's good to know about this is, not only did it allow the reconfiguration, but this will consist of an upgrading of the system to bring it more into conformity with the Suffolk County Health Code. There was some concern at one time about deliveries to the store and the ability to get delivery trucks in and out of the parking lot. The site plan shows the radius, more than adequate radius, deliveries will be by box trucks. This is in the record, numerous copies of it, but this is a box truck shown in the delivery area, more than adequate radius, to get that in and out, as shown on the survey and site plan. And we have agreed to a condition that would allow delivery only by box trucks and not by semis or any sort of tractor-trailer, which does create a problem in some retail uses in town. So, that's no problem with the condition of that. The existing building is approximately 11,500 of retail and 1750 of office. No change whatsoever in terms of enlargement. In response to concerns regarding shopping carts migrating off the property, because I know, not only from a practical, but from an aesthetic point of view, as a village resident, no one likes to see that, myself included, we did provide a physical barrier to the back. But, and there is, there was some suggestion about an application that actually prohibits migration, as it were, of shopping carts off-site by just electronic means. So, we did deliver, and there are two pieces of this. We did deliver an alternate plan that shows, limitate, that shows a barrier system. You might be familiar with this. It actually, what it is, there's an electronic barrier, which again, we notice, note, will be on the, stay, be contained within the property line. There is a device in the coasters on the bottom of the shopping carts that actually locks the wheel once it goes past those barriers. So, again, we took very seriously the thought of keeping, making sure that there were no shopping carts that migrated off the site. Let me see, I'm just finishing up pretty much. There are, we've provided for some new dumpsters in the back. There are existing dumpsters in the back. They faced, they face east. I had a conversation with Mr. Crottochi, who owns the property, to the east, and simply requested that we face those dumpsters towards the west, which will be done. We have no problem, of course, as a condition with that. The proposed user has a typical garbage pickup every day. We have no problem with the condition for that. There's a compacting dumpster, which is used only for the cardboard. But, in terms of smell or any other type of thing that would be offensive, there's a garbage pickup every day. So, we have, again, no problem with the condition for that. Simply put, this is a, I've enjoyed working with the board and trying to work out some of these kinks, but this is really no different than what the Village of Southampton sees from a planning board point of view and from a site plan point of view, sees every year. Retail use for retail use, primarily in interior modification. So, unless the board has any other questions, I think I've finished with my presentation. I'll reserve right to respond to things or help add to things that may be raised by the public, if they're significant. So, that's all I have to add, or that's all I have, I should say, now.
Is there anyone who would like to speak publicly? Please sign in and also state your name for the record when you approach the podium.
Tim Cunningham, 88 Main Street, Southampton, New York. I own several commercial properties in Southampton Village, and in, for at least 20 years, the building under discussion here has been partly or mostly vacant. So, it's basically a dead property. As far as I'm concerned, as both a property owner in Southampton and a resident of Southampton, I wouldn't call this a gift, but this is so beneficial to Southampton Village, it is almost unbelievable. I know of at least 15 people that drive to Bridgehampton specifically and only to shop at Citarella's. Citarella's is a strong draw to the village. Now, I will grant you, there are issues with the parking in the back. There was a parking study of commercial properties in the village done about, I think, five or seven years ago. And one of the issues they recommended the village address is the fact that the teachers, no offense to them, basically take up at least a third of that parking lot all the time. And, you know, in the old days, it was fine, but they still have plenty of room to put more parking on their own property. But, be that as it may, I would much, much rather, from the village standpoint, be in a position where parking's a problem, instead of having empty space. We already have one side of Jones Lane basically half-empty, and I don't see that getting filled anytime soon with a quality tenant of any kind. The fact that Bay Street wouldn't go into the Parish Art Museum for free tells you how difficult that is going to be. But, with Citarella's, if they can't find parking and you want to go to Citarella's, what will you do? You'll use one of the other parking lots and walk into, around the village. And this is exactly what we want. And I know, I think Mr. Parish at Sippin Soda is opposed to this application, but it's really no competition for him. People that go grocery shopping at Citarella's are or not going to go to Sippin Soda for independent reasons. But, I could see somebody going to Citarella's to get something with a friend and then saying, "Oh, let's go get a hamburger at Sippin Soda. I haven't been there in 20 years." This creates permanent, full-time jobs, and it's a draw. And along with sacks getting opened, it's a potential long-term good thing for the village. This man will be here for 20 years.
Thank you.
My name is Keith Davis. I'm the proprietor of the Golden Pear. Can I submit this for you guys to take a look at? Photographs and stuff like that?
Great. Just wanted to do that. Are they labeled Keith in any fashion?
Yes, they are. Yep.
So, he's a private entity, right?
That is correct. I'm in extreme disagreement with the prior to actual, you know, customers, friends, and business associates that I've known in the village here for the past 25 years. So, when I, when I say that I'm in opposition, please, there's no bad will toward anybody here in this room. The photos, the photos that I have for you here, the initial ones show Citarella location in Bridgehampton. These photos were taken yesterday, and the parking lot at Citarella in Bridgehampton has approximately 70 spaces, all of which belong to Citarella. It is not town parking, and it is not village parking. Now, on a Sunday afternoon in March, 75, 80 percent of those spaces were taken up. You'll see that on the side of the building, all the spaces are taken. In the rear portion of the building, there were some spaces that were available. The third picture reflects what I would consider to be employee parking. There were one, two, a good 15, 16 cars back there. So, it's a Sunday in March, 15 to 20 employees in that store would probably be a fair number of employees, based upon the size of the store, the number of cashiers, the number of food service stations, et cetera, 15 to 20. I would, I would guesstimate that 25 to 30 employees would be working in that store on a daily basis during the summer, and they will use the parking, that is, they use that parking there in Bridgehampton. And I would, I would have to say that they're going to use the village parking for that purpose. If you look at the number four, the fourth picture in the series, this is the back portion of Citarella. There's a very large parking area. There's a very large area for a vehicle to turn around, delivery trucks, et cetera. That's the rear entrance area where deliveries are received. You will notice that there, I counted, there's approximately 35 shopping carts there, which are, they're neatly stacked where they are. There's probably another 15 to 20 or so inside of the store. But, I don't believe that all of those are going to fit in the plan that I saw this afternoon. The plan that I saw today, which has been presented, was much, much smaller, and I don't believe that the number of shopping carts that are going to be at this potential Citarella will fit into the enclosure that has been presented on the plan. The next series of photographs are Hampton Road. These were taken this morning at 9:00 in the morning. You have Hampton Road, three different pictures of Hampton Road. You have the west side of the Hampton Road parking lot, which is where the recent renovation was done by Judy Daziderio, Town and Country Real Estate. This is 9:30 this morning. All of the parking spaces are taken. Now, this is Monday, March 4th. They're all taken. If you look further to the back, as we drive toward the back, where the current possible location will be for Citarella, all the parking spaces are taken. I counted two vacant parking spaces out of the entire parking lot, and Hampton Road, and all the parking that's inside of the west side there of that particular building. There were two parking lots available today, on a Monday morning, March 4th. I can't imagine what May through September would be like on Hampton Road and in that back parking lot. Further photographs reflect the parking situation as being extremely, extremely limited, and there are not enough parking spaces to accommodate the activity that would be taking place if this were proved as a Citarella. I can't understand how a negative impact assessment and no environmental impact review would be required for something such as this use. The drastic amount of traffic, the problems with parking, the problems with septic, the problems with delivery trucks, the problems with noise, I can't understand how that was not something that would be required. And the people that I've been speaking with, we intend to hopefully bring about a change to that in the very near future. What I'd like you, point your attention to now is, just take a look at the, there's a photograph that has a Citarella truck in the back portion of the building there. And what I want to point out is that this particular area in Bridgehampton, it does accommodate the activity that's going on there. These large trucks, these are over 50 feet long, okay? The plan that I saw today does not accommodate a 45, 50-foot box truck. It's much, much smaller, as it's shown on that plan. So, as far as I'm concerned, that's going to have to go back and be reviewed, because the truck doesn't fit on the plan that was presented to this board. There's plenty of room in Bridgehampton. There is not enough room behind this facility here. If you take a look at the next photograph, this shows the back of the Citarella in Bridgehampton. There are numerous U-boats, which are utilized for moving food from trucks, that are there. There is that very large dumpster, which is there. This space that you see here is much larger than what is presented on the plan. You can also take notice to the wastewater that's on the ground. That is not from melting snow. That is, that is a result of the operator dragging mats, which are called anti-fatigue mats, that are in the workstations. They drag those mats outside and they hose them down. And the result of that is greasy water that runs into the groundwater. Something else I want to point out is, I reviewed the plan today, and there are numerous food preparation and merchandising areas that are on the plan. Deli, prepared foods, salad bar, meat, fish, soup, and pizza. The plan showed no hand wash sinks, no preparation sinks, no three-compartment sinks, which are required by either Suffolk County Department of Health or the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets. I'm not certain which particular entity has been applied to for a food processing, food servicing, food sale license. But, either one of them is going to require that. The plan doesn't show it. The septic plan does not show and take into consideration any of those items. Hand wash sinks, food preparation sinks, three-compartment sinks, et cetera. The plan did not show any bathrooms on the plan at all. There are no bathrooms. There are no handicap access bathrooms for the general public, if there's an emergency of some kind to go to the bathroom, and you have 25 to 30 employees a day. Where do they go to the bathroom? There is nothing on the plan that shows anything for bathrooms, and also the flow of wastewater The thing that I'm probably more concerned about than anything else is that the septic system that is shown on the plan is on an adjacent property. The 8,900-square-foot grocery store, plus the medical portion of that, dry retail, it doesn't have any real estate available for a septic system. So, it is my understanding that the neighboring property, which is also owned by the applicant, is being utilized for a septic system. So, I don't know how the law relates to that, whether or not covenants must be put into place for that to happen, that any kind of an application has to be made to the village for those covenants, for somebody to allow a neighbor to have a septic system for an 11,000-square-foot grocery store, and the flow of all that wastewater to go onto a neighbor's property? I have no idea about that, but I think it's something that's extremely important. These food stores generate a tremendous amount of wastewater. I want you guys to understand that. It's a tremendous amount. I'm in the business, I have five operations. There is a lot of wastewater that gets generated out of these places. The garbage dumpster that's shown on the plan sits on the property, which is the neighboring property, and the Blue Duck Bakery has their refrigeration system on the back of the property. Now, it's my understanding that the Blue Duck Bakery does have a long-term lease and has to continue to operate. And they have approval from the Health Department for their septic system, for their refrigeration, in order to operate. Somebody cannot just come in and shut down somebody's septic system, or just start removing pieces of equipment without the approval of the Health Department. Otherwise, that tenant has to stop operating. That's the law and how the Health Department operates. So, the applicant has stated in the plan that they intend to remove the entire septic system of the Chinese restaurant and Blue Duck Bakery, and replace that with an upgraded system. I've, I intend to file a Freedom of Information Act form, so that I can review what's going on with the Health Department and also Suffolk County wastewater management. I did hear that there's been approvals by the Health Department. I'm just not certain if that relates to the complete septic system or not, the way that it was shown on the plan. And further, if you peruse through the rest of these photographs, you'll see that there is much, much more space at the Bridgehampton Citarella, which does not exist here in Southampton. The size of the building, the food store, the Citarella in Bridgehampton, is probably a little smaller than what is presented here. I guesstimated yesterday, I did a quick measurement, I would say that the Citarella in Bridgehampton is probably about between 8,000 and 9,000 square feet. They have a lot more room on the property to accommodate the operations. Parking, septic, deliveries of trucks, noise from trucks. The other concern that I have is, the building that is proposed to have the store, it currently has all of these signs that say, "No parking, fire zone." So, I don't know what the law is, that is this fire zone going to be removed? Do we not have to acknowledge a fire zone behind that building any longer? Because that's what these photographs are showing. No parking, no standing, fire zone. On the parking lot, it says, "No parking, fire zone." This is all across the entire back portion of the building. So, does all of this go away? Is a fire zone not required for this building and the surrounding buildings any longer? That's got to be, that's got to be investigated, and I just want to know what the law is regarding Last thing I'm going to say is, you know what? I don't know if any of these properties that we're talking about, they are on Hampton Road, I don't know if they are subject to any liens by the federal government, or if they've been pledged as access to the federal government. Right? The applicant has pled guilty to a million dollars in tax evasion back in 2008.
Excuse me. You should talk about the applicant as opposed to the ultimate tenant. And I think if you want to use names, if that's in your information, pardon the interruption, that's, could be considered per se liable. So, I just, you know, Keith, you're a great guy and-
As long as the property is not pledged, if there's, if there's no liens on the property, I'm just making sure that there are no federal liens or anything like that related to the application that would prevent this from going further or anything of that nature.
The applicant is not a, is a not a natural person.
Gotcha.
I think everyone knows where I'm going. Just-
Gotcha. I got you. All right. In my opinion, this is a classic case of trying to pack 10 pounds of dung into a five-pound bag. It's just too small. It's way too much for the village. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
If I may say so, I want to clarify something.
Why don't we wait, why don't we wait till the end? And I understand, and-
This is important, because first of all, I don't represent Mr. Kuros. I represent the ultimate owner and tenant, okay? Which is a corporation, which has been formed by the operators of Citarella. It will be a Citarella, okay? I'm concerned that there's some sort of, there is a, there is a, this is public record, there's a million-dollar lien on the property that has nothing to do with, anything to do with Citarella, or any of their individuals, or shareholders, or members, or anything of that nature. My understanding is that it is there as a result of some activities of the current owner. Under the contract that you have, that lien has to be obviously satisfied with closing. But, I'm very, very concerned about leaving some sort of impression that the proposed ultimate owner of this building, which are the companies that are, one of the companies that are controlled by the principles of Citarella, have anything to do with any sort of, any sort of lien or non-pending process.
Understood. Understood. I think you were next.
Thank you. Joe Redding, 43 Cameron Street, Southampton. Number one, I think the village needs things like Citarella to pep it up, and so, that's a great thing. Since we live right behind Citarella and lots of things, our concern is things like Things that'll intrude on us over the wall, kind of. And I think that what's very interesting, because my wife and I both looked at Bridgehampton today, just to refresh ourselves as to what that looked like, and Keith Davis has given you pictures that are, that are pretty good. But, you know, what we found is that Citarella's parking space had maybe an 80 percent occupancy today, and the parking spaces in the back of this building here also had an 80 percent occupancy today, and none of them were Citarella customers. So, and the other thing, it strikes me, because I've- So, and the other thing, it strikes me, because I've visited the Citarella in Bridge Hampton a number of times, is that the people who go there don't park in the back, they park in the front. They want to be close to the door, go in, get their stuff and come back. There aren't very many parking spaces right near the store. I would think that it could be instructive to get a lot of detail on the Bridge Hampton operation and see how that fits in the Southampton location. I think the village may consider, or somebody, a sound barrier shielding the Cameron Street houses from the various things that'll be going on in that parking lot. Probably not a big deal, but it would significantly help people on Cameron Street sleep at 5:00 in the morning and so forth. And I think Citarella in Bridge Hampton has two means of egress, and this one really has only one. And that's funneling through to Pine Street and onto Hampton Road. So some sort of a look at how, a traffic wizard, how you could really figure out, get more ways to get people out, get fire trucks in if you need them, put the fire trucks somewhere. It's, I mean, I don't want to seem negative, I just think there's a little work to be done before something like that happens. And I don't get the sense that it's been done yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Robert Riteni. I'm the owner of the former Saks Fifth Avenue building, where Potter and Barnes going into. And I just want to say that I fully embrace and welcome a company like Citarella coming into the community. As the first speaker said, I think it would be wonderful for the community. Food brings a lot of people, it brings traffic. While it doesn't compete with my type of business or, you know, my property, I firmly believe, and I would say this even if it was something else, that I think competition is good for business and business is good for business. That's what I meant to say. I do believe that. But I do have two issues, and I think parking is a serious question in this particular property. And if you look at Citarella's other two properties in Bridge Hampton and in East Hampton, they both have their own parking lots, which obviously this store does not. So that's number one. And in fact, I spoke to the Citarella company regarding my building when they were looking for a location. And without getting into specifics, there were people in the local community, in the administrative end of the community, who discouraged it because of deliveries, trucks, so on and so forth. That's with our own parking lot, okay? Which of course, this location again does not. And secondly, and I don't know if I can ask Mr. Bennett or if he wants to respond later, but as a landlord and as a property owner in the rest of the community also, I've looked into things such as septic systems on adjacent properties and so on and so forth. I have never heard, I don't know if it's the same ownership group or if it's the same deed, deeded property. I'm not a lawyer, so forgive me. But as far as granting easements and legal things, and if Mr. Bennett wants to just comment quickly and to say if it is in fact the same property or not, I'll be more than happy because I don't want to misspeak. But I've never heard of such a thing, and I don't understand why anyone would even, considering that we all have a limited time in this planet, unfortunately, that why one would want to commit to some obligation that you have to live up to then for theoretically in perpetuity, which perhaps could tie one's hands, either the previous owner, current owner, so on and so forth. So again, I embrace the idea of the business in the community, and I think it would be fantastic and wonderful, and I truly mean that. I do think there are some questions that need to be answered related to those two specific items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Skip Roth. I'm the owner of the building director across the street at 25 Hampton Road. I'm also the owner of the 1708 house around the corner. As a businessman, like the two previous speakers, three previous speakers, I guess, I'm not against business as far as that goes. But I'm going to read this just to get, run through it because everybody wants to hear this. "The proposed conversion of the mini mall to a grocery box store is inappropriate and objectional because: A. The building occupies nearly all of its own site and does not provide adequate parking. B. Box stores, whether they be grocery, drug, pharmacy, or some combination of all three, require their own dedicated parking and delivery facility. The village already has three in the central business district: Walbaum, CVS, and Rite Each of these has its own dedicated delivery and parking areas. This site has zero. C. To accommodate parking and delivery they cannot provide, this facility, if approved, will be double, triple, or quadruple counting adjacent spaces already inadequate." Just to explain that, I appeared here when they did over the store right next door, which is 16 Hampton Road, and it had required about 20-some spaces. It only had three. One of them's taken away for their dumpster, and they actually added some of the public parking, was turned over to an additional handicap parking space. So they actually, so they're counting those parking spaces over there four times for each store. So it's amazing. "Delivery will be especially troubling because delivery, as at similar facilities, will be by very large trucks, including tractor trailers, that will be obliged to double park along Hampton Road or somehow get into the parking lot, which seems impossible." "The kind of store D. The kind of store proposed is a single destination type facility, i.e. most customers come by car or SUV for what is available there and go away with bulky purchases usually requiring shopping carts, then leave and go home." It's a destination thing. You don't pick up groceries and go shop for a purse, you know, at the same time. Not very likely. I mean, I guess it happens, but, you know, there's, it's sort of like in shopping centers, they don't like certain businesses because they aren't good for the other businesses. "Their purchases are often every day, leading to considerable traffic." I mean, a lot of people go to the grocery store, I go to the grocery store every day, okay? "Such facilities have..." E. "Such facilities have very large refuse issues, requiring large dumpsters and frequent emptying or annual removal." F. "Of course, this strip of stores and the already inadequate parking is especially exacerbated by use of the stores not facing Hampton Road, like facing Main Street, the corner property, and especially by the school parking, which was already mentioned." That's a huge problem. G. "Since there are so many stores, 22 by my count, there are that many dumpsters, which makes the area adjacent to the parking a mess." It's a mess back there. I mean, if anybody looks at it and doesn't say it's a mess, they must be blind. "This could probably be addressed by a centralized facility for which, however, there seems to be no plan." I'm talking about centralized dumpster facilities. If anybody has been to Americana in Manhasset, they turned the back of the Americana into higher-rent spaces because, and you don't see any dumpsters. Nice walkway, beautiful storefronts in the back. Actually, in the front, they get rent, but they actually get more rent in the back because they have centralized dumpster. It could be done on that property. And I spoke out about this before on the other 16 Hampton Road. I mean, I have no objection to the building or anything like that, but, you know, it has no parking. "Finally, there is a better alternative for such a tenant, and that, of course, is the site at Flying Point. Approve that site for this kind of a use and have the two parties, each vying for such a facility, submit plans and perhaps some public improvements like a sidewalk along Hampton Road, and have them submit plans, and whoever submits the best plan gets to have it at Flying Point." I mean, that has a lot of benefits. I mean, it's got egress, ingress, egress, and all that sort of thing. And I mean, I'm not against Citarella's or even Whole Foods. I mean, very nice, but you're looking about at a destination kind of situation. "To solve the present mini-mark dilemma, think outside the box, pun intended, rationalize the parking, delivery, school use, attractiveness, and refuse issues and actually help the merchants be good and successful community citizens."
Thank you.
That's it.
My name is Gus Francis, and I've lived here in the village for 30 years, 15 of them on Jobbs Lane, and I had a business there as well, and I'm still a property owner on Jobbs Lane. I've thought about this often, and I realize that the parking is going to be difficult back there. But I want the board to keep in mind that this is existing square footage that was once a supermarket. This is not a new building we're putting up here. The present use of that building has never really been proper since the day it was subdivided. It's always been a hard rental, and today it sits mostly vacant. I walk up and down the streets of this village, and we've lost a lot of foot traffic in the 30 years I've been here. We've lost two supermarkets, okay? The post office is now a car destination, as is the library, okay? These were all once foot, we've lost a lot of foot traffic in the village, including two supermarkets. Years ago, they did a study on downtown Riverhead to find out what the problems were, why Riverhead was suffering so much downtown. And one of the reasons they found was that there was a lack of a grocery store for over 30 years downtown. Essential services are very important downtown, and we've lost a great deal of them, and gone with it has been the foot traffic. I feel that this is a very important application for the village, okay? I understand there's going to be burdens on that lot, but what, if all of those stores were booming, if, well, I don't know if there's eight stores, and I don't know what the present configuration is. If all of those stores were booming today, there would be similar demands on that parking lot, if they were. The fact is that the building remains vacant, and we have vacant stores up and down, side streets all over this village. I don't see how we can, we can ill afford to turn down this application. I believe it will generate foot traffic in the village, and I think it's very important. Now, there are all kinds of practical difficulties in the village. I listened to Mr. Davis. You know, Mr. Davis gets deliveries along his building on Nugent Street and blocks the right lane to pass the Main Street. No complaint, I'm not here to complain about that. He has a practical difficulty, he runs a wonderful business in the village, and we welcome him, okay? But we have to work with this practical difficulty because we're an old village. We have loads of practical difficulties all over the place. We deal with them because, and we're having difficulty. We have sewage issues, we have tons of issues, and downtown has suffered because of it. I can tell you it has, as a business owner, it has. I think this is an excellent application for the village. I think the village will benefit in the long run from it, okay? And I think the difficulties can be worked out. We've seen this before with other applications. On North Sea Road, Dennis Schmidt moved into McLaren's all store years ago. Sandra Place, they were up in arms up there. Difficulties can be worked out. But these people are in business here, and nobody denied them to come in, okay? The competition is good for the village residents, and I think the application should be approved. I don't see what else we're going to do with this large square footage of property. It was ill-conceived from the beginning years ago, from when it, and it was once a supermarket, and it's changed back. It was ill-conceived, the way it's developed now, and is largely vacant most of the time, or has tenants in there that can't make it, okay? And we have enough of that in the village. This is someone who's willing to come in and make a huge investment in the village, and I hope the board will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any letters that were submitted to be read?
No, I think everything here is from John.
This one letter from 26.
Could you just please come up to the podium?
What would be helpful?
Would be a, would be a plan for employee parking. I mean, if the village worked with the company and they had an actual location, because I truly can't see where they're going to park the employees and then have enough for everyone else. So that would, that would probably be a very helpful thing, if there was perhaps an off-site location.
Yeah, there's a letter from CVS.
And that's all?
I think that's it. Glad to hear it's written.
Okay, this is a letter that was received by the village February 26th regarding this application. "Gentlemen, I am familiar with the above application. As the owner of the CVS HSBC Shopping Center at 111 Main Street, I express to my full support for this application to go forward and be approved. I believe this project will generate year-round commercial activity for Southampton Village. Rightfully yours, Leon Silverman, Chairman."
This letter is, stand received, it's stand received March 3rd.
Today's 4.
We'll restamp this. "Dear Village of Southampton Planning Board, while I do believe Southampton is in need of another option for grocery shopping, I do not feel that the venue on Hampton Road for Citarella's Market is a safe option. Currently, the volume of cars that utilize the back parking lot is high, except on weekends. As we know, once warmer weather arrives and summer is upon us, our population triples and the parking spaces in the village are a hot commodity. Since the improvements to the parking lot, there are approximately 26 parking spaces less than there were before September 2012. This decrease has negatively interfered with the existing businesses. Citarella in the mini mall will only cause more excessive traffic and problems with limited parking on both Hampton Road and Pine Street parking lot. Southampton would benefit from another grocery store, but not in the chosen location. I know the mini mall once was a grocery store, but that was over 40 years ago, when high-volume auto and pedestrian traffic were not issues. Thank you for your time, and please consider the safety for all. Sincerely, Sean King." And this is from Sean's place on 54 Hampton Road. Would you like to speak?
I'm Keith Kuros, I own the Blue Duck Bakery. And I understand Citarella wanting to be in Southampton, it's a great place to do business. I agree with Keith Davis that I don't think that location supports what will happen if they become an owner there. The traffic in that back parking lot is excessive, unsafe. With the renovations that they did to it, it's even less, as is shown in that letter. And I just think it's a safety issue. As far as septic systems, I think the plans are showing that they're going to be doing the septic systems in the parking lot behind the bakery and China Garden, and we're already sharing that, so I'm not sure how that's going to work out with wastewater. So just a couple of issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Very briefly, wastewater is not within the jurisdiction of this board, but no one should be concerned about the capacity or the fact that it will be on alternate site. Since January 16th, I've had in the record the approval of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Board of Review, in which, by way of easement and by recognition of, quote, "The new sewage disposal systems will be an improvement over existing systems, requiring easements running with the land," because they're there already. The Board of Review did grant the approval for that, and everything is in compliance with the requirements of the state public health law as well as the Suffolk County Department of Health Regulations. Seeker, the Seeker review was a good one. In any event, February 4th is a 30-day statute of limitations, so that's untouchable. The fruit prep items, the number of sinks, et cetera, et cetera, that's not a site plan item, that's more a building permit slash ag and markets law issue, not really within the jurisdiction of this board, but I do have joked out, and I'll put one of the copies into the record, of a floor plan showing all the appropriate double sinks and hand washing at the various... at the various stations.
Can I see one more?
Yes. But again, this is something that I wouldn't, I wouldn't, the planning board in any event, because it's not something that the planning board looks at, so, but in any event, that will be taken care of at the appropriate stage. As the board is aware, many of these things have worked out after a site plan approval. But that's, we've doped out where those sinks will be, and they're all in conformance with the ag and markets law requirements. There's no intent to remove the fire zones, and the issues that have been raised are either issues, oh, the truck loading has been covered. It's shown in the site plan, not only the radius, but the proposed limitations on the size of truck deliveries. So the issues that have been raised are either been covered by other permits or beyond any purview at this point, so I would respectfully request that the board close the hearing. This is, again, a request for interior modifications. I think you can't lose sight of that. This is what happens every year up and down Jobbs Lane and Main Street, Hampton Road, Nugent Street, people come in, they make interior modifications to existing retail spaces and do not add any square footage to the use. And this board, since it's been reviewing, since it's been reviewing commercial building permits for interior renovation, which is essentially what this is, has never made any sort of inquiry into the parking, nor should it, nor would it, because the village code, like the town code, I said town code, because it stems from the same McCruskey Ruder codes that were written in the '70s, they grandfather existing parking. Indeed, some of the speakers, interestingly enough, have no onsite parking for their uses. So that's what happens in the village. It's an older village. It was built up with parking as we all know it, and therefore, the drafters of the village code realized that if you weren't going to add any sort of usable floor area, you didn't have to provide any parking. Thank you.
Beau, our options here are to close the public hearing?
Or continue it.
Or continue it.
You might inquire if anybody has, wants to make any further submissions in writing.
Okay.
Just, excuse me. Make this brief. My name is Tony Valley, owner of Southampton Stationery at 18 Hampton Road. I think the real issue is people addressed in the room, you know, there's business people here, there's some direct relation to competition, or anybody that owns a business. It's healthy, it's concerning, but I think one of the real issues, most concerning, that really, as a board, as a village, is caring, is the parking situation and the safety situation. I mean, I find it at a point of being comical, almost sitting in this room and listening to plans. At this point, is everybody aware that those, these trucks, dumpsters, tractor trailers, they're all being directed toward, what somebody said before, was Pine Street, also known as the school safety zone. That's all I needed. It's a joke. It's just a joke, okay? Not to mention that this limited parking has also negatively affected the values of all our properties, and this is something that, you know, I just would hope the board takes into consideration. So like you said, it's an old village, these are problems that we work with, we really need to come up with a solution. I'm not against Ciderella's coming in, but not in the current situ... I don't even understand why they would want to without the prob... I mean, really, they could give me that business, give me that building, I wouldn't want to operate, because where are their customers going to park? I mean, they're faced with the same issues, so I think together we can somehow come up with an answer, and really need to address it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure. That's what we're here for.
This is, this is a can, and again, I add it only for informational purposes. It really doesn't have anything to do with the record because of the way that the village law is drafted, but I add it just for informational purposes. This has been sort of kicked down, this is a can that's been kicked down the road for some time. In 2007, and I think Gus Franzese and Tim Cunningham made reference to this study, this is a 2007 Nelson Pope and Voorhees study, and one of the parking lots that they identify is parking lot number five, and parking lot number five is the lot behind Hampton Road. The village had mentioned during a progress meeting with Nelson and Pope, the businesses, this is the existing time, okay, have been complaining that teachers from the schools are overcrowding the parking lot. We recommend the village meet with school officials to discuss alternate parking areas for school staff. I give that, not that I think it's necessary for the record, but for informational purposes only.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes.
What's your thoughts on this at this point? I mean, I think we have a lot of information to digest and maybe some more.
Yeah, I don't know about keeping the meeting open or maybe four, written comment possibly?
Mm-hmm.
Or a couple of, maybe a week or two? I don't know. Well...
Does anybody have any written submissions? Does anybody have any written submissions?
I did forget one thing, though.
Come up, Tony, thanks.
Written submissions.
Sorry, the one thing I left out was also, you know, with the parking situation, if a plan is developed, which currently there should be one in place as we speak now, before the tenant arrives, that it's enforced, which it's not. I'm there every day, so we can talk about this all, and there's many other people that are there every day.
What do you mean it's not enforced?
I mean, it's not enforced. We have two-hour parking, eight-hour parking, 15-minute parking. There are ways of sol... I'm a believer of ways of solving any problem, but not if we make and set plans that aren't enforced. They're just not simply enforced. There's not a policeman, a code enforcer at all, having cars move after 15 minutes, having employees that are probably breaking laws parking, okay? And neighbors just working with one another. So that's all, again, just, you know, if a plan is developed, to see that it's enforced, it's a revenue, you know, it's part of the revenue for the village as well. To build this, put this in there, have it all flowing, and have it, you know, have everybody working on it, that it can work. That's all. Thank you.
I would just mention during the summer, those parking regulations are strictly enforced. The village renter police are in that lot three, four times a day.
Thank you.
I would think that we would want to explore some of these possibilities with the village board, as far as, you know...
And the master plan?
And the master plan, and going back to the parking study and seeing if there's any changes. We know that there have been changes at that parking lot since the parking study was done.
And so the audience is aware, we're not part of the master plan planning, we had nothing, no, no input on the restructuring of the rear parking lot where we lost the 23 spots. So I think, I think that's a good idea. I think we have to work together and, please come up.
I'm sorry.
I was actually waving to Keith, but you can come up right behind him.
One last thing is that I did make an attempt to contact a number of business owners regarding this issue. A number of them were on vacation and out of town, so I think it would be beneficial to keep this open, so that when people do come back from vacation, at least there would be another public hearing for people to come and express their approval or disapproval of this when they're back from vacation.
I understand.
Just quickly, I think there's some tendency to think in terms of a floor plan as the thing you approve or not, and to make it work, there are some surrounding issues that the village needs to think through, because we don't want somebody to come in and be a failure, we want somebody to come in and be a success. And I just hope that we broaden the consideration out so that we give it a good chance to really work out.
If I may, before you make the motion, whatever it's going to be, I would again ask that the meeting be closed. Any item that has been brought up has been addressed by the board or by the other agencies involved. You can't just say somebody else was going to come here and say something. You have to be, there has to be a specific reason to keep a meeting open. I think everything has been addressed, and if you were going to keep it open, I would respectfully request that you keep it open as the Southampton Town Planning Board does, for maybe a 10-day written comment period. This has been plenty of notice on this. I had to notify 66 of surrounding property owners. If it was that important, they would have had a representative here, they would have made it their business to be here themselves. On more than one occasion, I've delayed a trip, or actually come back early from a trip, to appear at a public hearing, so I would respectfully request that the board close the matter for written submission only for 10 days. The village gave me two posters, and I said, I want to post four, so I went back and posted four. I made sure that the Southampton Press published, so there's been plenty of notification on this, even beforehand, because there have been items in the newspaper about it before the public hearing, so it's been more than adequate opportunity for anyone who wanted to comment to this. And again, interior modification, that's legally what it is. Again, my request is made respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close and keep it for written comment.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think so. I think we've heard the, some pros and cons from the people of the village, and I think, I don't think keeping it open is going to bring up any other issues, but I do think we have some work to do on the issues that were raised. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing and keep it open for a 10-day written period?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and keep it open for 10-day written comments.
Patch a state then 10 days to close the business on March 14th.
March 14th, okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I.
Thank you for your time and patience. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't really, kind of, nobody got a thing to me.
No, I don't think people are totally against it. I really think they're concerned about the parking.
Which we really have nothing to do with.
No, we can't.
It's a lot that we can't.
The teachers are a big...
Yeah, and they do have a parking over there.
Okay, moving on now to extensions, we have Gem Powell LLC, 161 Powell Avenue, and that is pending written decision.
And there's a decision in the file extending the opportunity to obtain a building permit to the May regular meeting and extending the site plan decision for one year until the March 2014 hearing, and therefore, the firm to vote on that resolution would be to approve the extensions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the extension request from Gem Powell LLC?
I'll make the motion to extend Gem Powell's application till March of 2014.
No, to approve, approve the resolution.
Approve the resolution.
Yeah, approve the resolution.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is Punnet and Saterno LLC, 200 North Sea Road, request for extension.
Gil, when was that, when was the site plan approval, and when is that expired?
That's filed now, let me just... Request for a one-year extension.
I thought we'd begin the extension at our work session.
Right. Do we approve that at the work session?
Yeah.
We did. We did.
Unofficially, you said, problem with it.
Right.
Based upon the applicant's demonstration of attempts to comply with the site plan timeframe and also improvements made to the premises, the board determines that good cause has been shown to extend the site plan approval, which is hereby extended to and including the regular public meeting in March 2014.
Do I have a motion for approval of the extension?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the extension till March 2014.
And I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I.
Gil, you had the orig... No, I'm sorry. Beau, you have the original?
Um, no, there's no, I didn't get a chance.
You didn't do it, okay.
All right, write that up. All right, next is Tennis Courts.
Aunt Fennett has the text on that.
I'm working on it right now.
Next is Tennis Courts, Lifton Green LLC, again, which we...
There is a written resolution in the file approving the tennis court as modified, and affirmative vote on the resolution will be to approve the court.
I don't have a copy of that, but...
Lifton Green, yeah. This one?
Okay, thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion for approving the resolution for the tennis court for 301 Captain's Neck Lane LLC?
Wait. Lifton Green first?
Lifton Green.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you handed me...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here it is, I have it here. Okay, I'm sorry, Lifton Green.
Lifton Green, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept, I lost track. Okay, resolution, approving the tennis court of Lifton Green.
Second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And I. And then the, next is the Captain's Neck Lane, 301 Captain's Neck Lane, and we have a resolution.
Approving the court.
Approving the tennis court.
Okay, I'll make the...
Affirmative vote on the resolution would be to approve the court.
Yes, I'll make the resolution to approve the court of 301 Captain's Neck Lane.
Second?
Second, I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, subdivision review, OAI Associates, and, we worked on that.
That's adjourned to April.
That was adjourned to April. Next is Jackie and Chandler Wells, 126 and 134 Pelletro Street.
In the file is a written decision approving the application as amended, and affirmative vote on the, and also conditionally approving it as subject to the recording of a covenant and easement, and an affirmative vote on the resolution will be to approve the conditional resolution.
Okay, I'll make the resolution for the conditionally approval of the re-subdivision of Jackie and Chandler Wells.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
You'll have to.
I will.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I.
Bill didn't finish with the abad, so resolution to adjourn that to the next regular meeting.
Okay. So we're still working on the abad resolution? Okay, I have Pelosi, Ioto, and Roller.
In the file is a written resolution determining the classification of this should be as an unlisted action, requiring a full EAF be submitted, and declaring the planning board as lead agency, and an affirmative vote on the resolution would be to approve the three of the four going.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion for Pelosi, Ioto, and Roller redoing of the secret classification and as being lead agency.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I.
Does Mr. Goodmore have anything to...
If I need a copy?
Sure. Do you have an extra copy for Rooney?
There you go. Would that be a decision, would I say to approve that decision? Is this a decision?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution for secret classification.
All right. That's for Rooney. Thank you.
And next is Victoria Khan, 51 Hill Street.
The applicant has submitted a sick copy of the decision of the Board of Appeals, granting variance necessary for the retention of the accessory structure in its present location, and between now and the next meeting, I'm sure I'll be conferring with Kathy with regard to further outstanding issues... to further outstanding issues on that site, and we'll submit a memo to the board.
Do we have a submitted package on that now?
Other than the plan that was submitted prior to the zoning board application--
So do we have a full application from them?
Well, we have, we have a, we have a plan that we had critiqued, asking for an additional design for the gravel parking area.
Right.
So my, the memo that's in, from February 25th from NPNV asks that the planning board might want to require that the applicant provide a design concept for that part of the property--
Okay.
To look into other ways of parking cars there, or if it's not possible, they really need to look at it, so.
Okay, so do I have a motion then to adjourn that the owners request the Victoria Khan for all purposes?
I'll make the motion in the file.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I. Okay, Southampton Hospital, 240 Meeting House Lane.
Apparently they're working on a variance application to the Board of Appeals, I don't know the status of it, but it doesn't appear that, it appears they may be amending the present application that was submitted for discussion before this board, but we don't have, I don't think there's been any further correspondence, so therefore I would recommend a resolution to, at the request of the applicant, to adjourn the matter for all purposes for the next meeting.
Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I. Okay, we have the minute approval for February 25th, 2003, can I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from February 25th.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
And I. Okay, I think that concludes us. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I.